This event is being livestreamed via the Village of Midlothian Technology Committee Facebook page. And it's also being videoed and will be on the Village's YouTube channel in the next couple of days. What I'd like to first do is introduce any trustees that are here. Sandy Crowley is here, Ellen is here, Carl is here. I can't see anybody else. I also want to introduce all of my fellow Team Midlothian members. Helen, Mary Chiz, Theda, Mr. Gillis, Chris. Who else? The light's in my eye, can't see who else is here. So raise your hands, please. Come on, raise your hands. Very good. And also, Tom Nagel, he's our engineer, he's with Robinson Engineering. Robinson Engineering helped the village out immensely through this whole process. So thanks to Tom and to his crew for that. Before I was elected trustee in 2017, I joined Team Midlothian on September 5th, 2013. And I'm proud to say that we will be celebrating our sixth anniversary in a couple of weeks on April 18. And when Team Midlothian first started its journey for flood relief for Midlothian, we recognized the importance of bringing some financial relief to the property owners who were required to carry FEMA flood insurance. Some of those property owners don't ever flood, but they still have to pay for flood insurance. But even worse, we have property owners who carry the flood insurance and still do flood. And besides paying those premiums, still had to replace carpeting and furnaces and air conditioning units and furniture and personal belongings year after year every time we flooded. The only mechanism to achieve that financial relief was through the community rating system. And there are two great benefits to this program. The first is, obviously, the premium discount that all of our residents will be getting if their property qualifies. And the other is the better flood mitigation practices and stormwater management for the entire community. And that's going to be a benefit for all of us, not just those that are in the floodplain. So where are we at? Okay, this is our agenda, this is what we're going to be covering this evening. What is CRS? What is Midlothian's flooding, stormwater ordinance, and what's the difference? Next item will be the 15% FEMA flood insurance discount. Next item, we'll be talking about our flood map. Know the flood map, floodplain versus floodway. Then we'll discuss in brief elevation certificates. And Tom from Robinson will have some information to share. Then we'll talk a little bit about the myths of flood insurance, then we'll have time for questions and answers afterwards. So, first, what is CRS? There's a lot to cover on this topic. But first, I want to give you a quick overview of the timeline. I was appointed to be the CRS coordinator back in April of 2015. In June of 2015, the village had its first community assistance visit from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, or IDNR as we refer to it. IDNR came in June, they toured the village, sat down with Robinson Engineering and with building department staff, and reviewed the building department files. And we received a letter in July stating that we failed the visit. We had 18 violations. In addition to those violations, the village did not have a building superintendent at the time. So fast forward to June of, spring sometime of 2016, I think, April of 2016, the village did hire a building department superintendent. Fast forward then to January of 2017. We scheduled a CRS kickoff meeting to review the CRS checklist. Robinson Engineering then contacted the IDNR and FEMA to report the preliminary activity reports that we thought we accumulated. IDNR reviewed the report and gave us the go-ahead to reapply. In March of 2017, the village resubmitted the required letter of interest to join CRS. And in May of 2017, the CRS application, we had our CRS application meeting with Luanne, who is our FEMA CRS specialist. On June 29th, we submitted all of our CRS application documents. In April of 2018, on April 2nd actually, 2018, the village received a letter from FEMA confirming that our, the approval of our CRS application. And then, effective on May 1st, 2018, the village was now considered a CRS community with a class rating of seven. And that's the effective date of the 15% premium discounts for all flood policies that are issued in the special flood hazard area. So CRS is not a law, it's not an ordinance. It's just a voluntary program that's part of the National Flood Insurance Program. And it provides incentives for communities if they do more than the bare minimum in floodplain management. You accumulate points and then you can join the CRS program. And then you qualify for the discounts. But it's important to note again, CRS is voluntary, it's not mandatory. And when we started this process, I myself was surprised to know that Midlothian's Public Works Department was already performing a lot of stormwater management activities that provided a lot of the credited points that got us our community rating system. That got us our CRS rating. And those activities just included some normal day-to-day public works operations, but also quarterly and annual inspections that were required by MWRD and the county and the state. Oh, no, stay on that page for a second, Sandra, sorry. You could see, so in the top right corner, you see that picture of the CRS resources. That's the front page of the CRS manual. It's a 600-page guide. And that's the CRS resource guide and the coordinator manual. And that's the document that we used that outlines the program and the activities that we followed during the application process. Now, the link to that is located on the Village's website. I'll be referring to a lot of information that we have on the Village website. Go to the Village website homepage, click on Departments, click on Building, click on Community Rating System, and it'll take you to the CRS page where all this information we're talking about today is located. Okay? The chart in the bottom is a CRS classification chart. And it shows that the lowest classification is 10. And most communities start out as a 10, and then go up from there as you accumulate points. Midlothian started out as a 7, which is pretty incredible. We were, the FEMA representatives that we dealt with were very impressed that we came out that fast. In fact, when Paul Osman from the Office of Water Resources, which is part of IDNR, he personally came to the village to provide us with our CRS plaque. And he told us at the meeting that we went from the best to the worst. I mean, the worst to the best, sorry. We went from the worst to the best. Okay, now, part of the CRS activities, there are 18 different activities that participated. But in all of those activities are various tasks. So the village participated in, all of our points that we accumulated were in 300, 400, and 500. And most of the points came from Section 500, and that was mostly due to a lot of the work that Public Works was already doing. So, under Series 600, which is flood preparedness, the village has two possible opportunities for earning additional points. The first opportunity is the use of Code RED. Code RED is a system that the village has had in place for several years, and it's an emergency alert system. And anybody is, anybody who lives in the village, or works in the village, or owns a business, or owns property in the village, or has any interest in the village, is able to sign up for a Code RED alert. You can get a home phone call, a work or business phone call, a text message, an email. And we also have the option for TDI for the hearing impaired. The other opportunity is through our USGS Rain Gauge app. We have a USGS rain gauge that is located on Natalie Creek along 149th Street near Knox Avenue. And the USGS provides an app that you can download on your computer or your cellphone. And it'll provide real-time data for the height of the creek. Joe, what is the threshold you have it set at for alerts? Seven and a half feet? Okay. If we have a huge storm coming, we're all prepared, we all make sure that our cellphones are charged. Because once that creek hits seven and three-quarter feet, we all, all of us who have signed up for this USGS app will start getting text messages. So, in February of 2018, we had the usual winter rainstorm. And our phones were going off all night long. Every time that creek rose an inch, we got an alert. But by the same token, as the creek reseeded, we would get alerts also. So then we knew it was safe, we could go back to sleep. So, the village does have the potential for earning points using both of these alert systems. But CRS requires 80% participation from all of the property owners who are located in the special flood hazard area. So we really need everyone's participation to sign up for both of these alert systems. Because we have to show evidence to FEMA that we've got 80% participation in order to get the points. And I also want everyone to know that both of these alert systems are free, and they're also confidential. And again, other credit points that we have received were for some state and regional activities. One example would be for the Water Reclamation District's requirement for all communities to participate in its inflow and infiltration. That project is still ongoing, we don't have points for it yet. But down the road, when we have our next visit from FEMA, we can show that we participated in this INI program and that potentially earned points. Some of you may have gotten orange door hangers on your doorknobs in the last month or so, letting you know that inspectors were going to be walking around the neighborhood to check out properties. But those inspections were part of this INI program. Okay, next slide. Okay. Now, what is the Village's stormwater, flooding and stormwater ordinance? This is the homepage of our Village website. If you can see along the bottom, there's a toolbar, you'll see a link for Code RED. So if you're not already signed up for Code RED, you can do it through the website. If you don't have a computer or a cellphone, you could stop at the Village Hall and fill out a form. And one of the Village employees will put your phone number in the Code RED system. And again, it is confidential. Also down there, you can see is the municipal code link. If you click on that municipal code link, it'll take you to the... There you go. It'll take you to the Sterling Cottifier page, okay? The list on the left is a list of all the village ordinances. Title 4 is the building regulations. Title 12.2, Articles A, B, and C contain all of the flooding and stormwater ordinance regulations. That was adopted by the village in 2008. So, right here is where all of the floodplain development requirements are listed. So please keep in mind that all property development in the village is governed by Title 4. However, if the property is in a flood zone, it's governed by Title 4 and Title 12.2. And this includes new construction for room additions, garages, decks, fences, sheds, and the like. If you're not sure, contact the building department. Superintendent Nick Weinert will be happy to discuss with you. And I apologize, I forgot to introduce Nick to you earlier. Nick joined the village six months ago as our building superintendent. And he's been doing a fabulous job helping us upgrade the department and upgrade all of our ordinances. And he also recently, back in the middle of March, went to FEMA's Emergency Management Institute in Maryland and participated in a week-long CRS training course. So, next slide. What's the difference between CRS and Title 12.2? Again, CRS is a program, it's not an ordinance or a law. However, the Village's Title 12.2 is our village code. It is the law that we use to govern all development in a floodplain. So it's important to remember, following CRS is voluntary, but following village ordinances is mandatory. And at some point down the road, if the village became lax and did not follow all of the requirements of CRS program and NFIP, every five years, we are reevaluated. And if it's determined that we're not following the program, then we could lose our CRS status and all of the flood discount, the flood premium discounts that we've earned for the village residents would go away. Okay. In the middle there, the middle statement, number 11. That's part of the 12.2. Make federally subsidized flood insurance available for property in the village by fulfilling the requirements of the National Insurance Program. Okay, the village adopted that ordinance in 2008. And without it, the village would not be in compliance with NFIP. And no properties in the village would qualify to participate in NFIP or purchase FEMA flood insurance. And because the village met the minimum requirements, we can participate in the NFIP. But because we demonstrated that the village exceeds the minimum stormwater management requirements, we accumulated over 1,800 points. Midlothian was able to become a Class 7 community. And again, that qualifies special flood hazard area FEMA premiums to 15% discount. Okay. Reducing the impact. We all know that we're never going to be able to stop flooding, but there's a lot that we could do to reduce the impact. All new developments, again, are required to follow the village code. And they also must follow the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District's Watershed Maintenance Ordinance, or what we refer to as a WMO. I know I don't have that listed on here. But the WMO was put into place, it went to effect actually in May of 2014, and then it was amended in February of 2018. And the WMO requires all new developments to provide sufficient retention and detention of a project's stormwater runoff, as well as slow down the flow rate of their stormwater. The intention of this ordinance was to help alleviate potential flooding in downstream communities. And if it's in a floodplain, developments must also follow FEMA and NFIP guidelines, which would require them to provide an elevation certificate. But we'll get to elevation certificates in a minute. All four of the projects that are listed here were all reviewed and all had to follow compliance with the WMO. Walgreens, for example, was a little bit landlocked. There was no, there was no room over by Walgreens for them to put in a retention pond. So they put their retention underground. The New Park District development will include a retention pond. And it will be on the, it'll be to the south of the building. And then, of course, we have our long-awaited Natalie Creek project. That project is underway. Utilities are being marked right now. The vacant lots are being cleared so that the retention pond can be installed. The project's schedule is currently being finalized. And hopefully, we'll be able to post it on the Village website in the next few weeks or so. Also, the village is currently working on a stormwater management capital plan. And that will identify probably over 20 potential projects that the village can undertake to provide better stormwater management and flood mitigation. The areas that are being studied include Jolly Homes, Belly Button Hill, Bremen Heights, and the Natalie Creek Corridor. And this plan is being funded by a grant that the village received. And the reason for getting the grant to put together this plan was so that as funding opportunities come, become available for engineering, we'll already have a shovel-ready plan in place. So if it matches up to a grant requirement, we can apply for a grant for the engineering. And then, once the engineering's done, then we can apply for additional funding to have the construction funded. So it's very, very important for the village to be forward-thinking and have a strong plan in place so that we can continue with the stormwater management plan. This plan, actually, the draft of this plan is going to be presented at the Village Hall on Tuesday, April 23rd at 5:30 at Village Hall. And you're all welcome to come if you like. I'm sure it's probably going to be videoed again, and it'll be on the Village YouTube link. So if you can't attend the meeting, you can watch it later to see what the plan is all about. And of course, as a result of the Natalie Creek mitigation project, the Natalie Creek Trail Committee was formed. And that's a partnership with Midlothian, Crestwood, Oak Forest, Robbins, and Blue Island. And again, a grant was received to complete Phase 1 engineering for a trail that hopefully someday will connect all of these communities to the Cal-Sag Trail. Okay. FEMA flood discount. Who here does have FEMA flood insurance? And have you all received your 15% discount? Have you been notified by your insurance agent at all that you are entitled to a discount? Okay. We do, we do have copies, we do have copies of the letter in the back. So please take a copy of the letter. Also, if you go to the Village website, again, go to Departments, Building, Community Rating System page, and a copy of the letter is on that page. You can email it to your insurance agent, or take a copy to your insurance agent. Now, I have heard from other residents as well, no, you know, yes, I have FEMA flood insurance, but I haven't gotten notice of my discount. But I've heard from a few other residents that they got their notice within a week of the village getting the letter. So I'm not exactly sure why there's a communication breakdown. Because as soon as, just so you're aware, as soon as FEMA announced that the village of Midlothian was a CRS community, that information should have been communicated out to all of the insurance carriers that write FEMA flood insurance for the residents in Midlothian. So, I, and as far as I know, your discount should be retroactive, back to May 1st, because that's when, that's the effective date of our discount. So again, please take a copy of that letter to your insurance agent, call your insurance agent. If you are given a hard time, please give me a call. And I will look, you know, I'll contact someone at NFIP and see what the process should be. And we'll try and help you get it all straightened out. Okay. All right, next thing. Know the flood map, floodplain versus floodway. This is a copy of a flood map. You guys can all come up and take a closer look at it later on. But we're going to go ahead and pull a copy up on the, on the screen. Again, go to the Village website, go to the Community Rating System page. There is a link to the flood map there. When you pull up the link... Are you able to get it, Sandra? Okay, well, I'll keep talking while she works on that. So anyways, if you go to the Village website, you can pull up a copy of the map. Up in the upper left-hand corner, there will be a box. All you have to do is type in your address. You don't put in the number and the street. You don't have to type in Midlothian, because it's already set to zoom in on Midlothian. Do you need the code? Huh? No, Helmet has it. Okay. So you type in your address, and the map will zoom right to your home, okay? There's a tool, there's a navigation tool, so you can slide the map all around. And you'll see on the map, similar to this... See all the blue on that map? There's some, some areas are shaded in blue. Some of the areas are shaded in blue, and then some of the blue areas have red crosshatching on them. The blue areas that are highlighted, those, that is the special flood hazard area. That is the high-risk flood zone here in Midlothian. Where the blue area has the red crosshatch, that's the floodway. That's the even higher flood risk areas. Now, a lot of you might say, "Well, my house is located in the special flood hazard area, but I never flood." And that's true. And that's one of the reasons, again, one of the reasons why we wanted to go after this community rating system was to try to give, anybody who has to carry FEMA flood insurance, try to give everybody some sort of financial relief on this. So, if you have any questions with regards to where your house is located or how much your house is in a floodplain, because some people's entire yard, some properties, the entire property is in the floodplain. Some other properties, like the front two feet of their front yards in the floodplain, or the back two feet of their backyards in the floodplain. And so that's where, again, perhaps maybe having an elevation certificate done on your property might be of interest and might be have helped you. But we'll get to the elevation certificates in a minute. Oh, you got it? Okay. All right, give us just a second here. It's all the way at the bottom, the map is at the bottom. Uh, I don't know if it's in that link. No, it's not in that link. Keep going. Wait, slide back up a little. It's real teeny-tiny. No, that's not it. Ah, there it is. Midlothian, the flood map is the Midlothian Flood Viewer GIS map. This map was provided to us by South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association. Ah, there we go. You want to put my address in there, Sandy? 14632 Keeler. You don't have to put Midlothian. It's as simple as that, if you can get the map to pop up. So, there's a little teeny-tiny blue dot on the roof of my house, you can barely see it. There it is. The graphics on this map are kind of difficult. They'll only identify the property with the little teeny-tiny blue dot. So if your house is in the special flood hazard area, it's going to be hard to see the blue dot over the blue shading. But basically, that's my house. You can minimize the, the map a little bit, and you can slide the map all over the whole village to see where the flood zone goes. And there's no rhyme or reason to it. It's not, you know, set in a north-south grid, it just winds all over like a bowl of spaghetti.
Question?
Hmm?
Question?
Mm-hmm.
So the blue dot indicates that's the location.
That's my house, right. The blue dot is on my roof, right there.
And you are not in a blue area, therefore, you're not in a flood...
That's correct. My house is not in a flood zone. If you, Sandy, can you hit the minus sign up there to sort of minimize the map a little bit?
Yeah, you can put mine in, Kathy, to show the floodplain.
Okay. Okay, go ahead and put another one in. Okay, you see, you see where it says floodway there, and there's that blue line? That's the last leg of Natalie Creek that goes from Costner down to Pulaski.
There's the floodway.
There's the floodway. So you can see the area that's kind of shaded in brown. That is not the special flood hazard area, but it is a low-risk flood zone. And then the area, the lots that are not shaded at all are not in a flood zone. Then you have the blue area, like Zone AE, that's special flood hazard area. But the blue area that's cross-hatched is the floodway.
The red line's a what?
The red, crosshatching indicates that that's the floodway. The thought being, the, I don't know who made up the rules and who made up the definitions, but the floodway is supposed to be the area of the water flow, even though there are houses built there. If the creek was going to overflow, that would be where the water would flow. And then, the outside of the floodway is where the water would sort of sit and saturate in. Did I explain that right, Tom? I don't think I did.
It's based on the velocity of water.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's, that's the flood map, that's the tool that we have to use.
Why don't we go over to where the main flood's going?
Pardon me?
Go to 145th and Waverly.
Okay. But 145th and Waverly...
Is in the major floodplain, and it's in flood zone.
Right, it is.
It was high as a railroad tracks.
Mm-hmm.
Populous flood if we're high as a railroad track to the creek where the floods flow.
I can't answer that question. Can you, can you move the map over there?
I'm trying.
Oh, I see.
Hey Kathy?
Yes.
When we were trying to find enough data about who flooded and what, where, because just talking to people, we took, we went door-to-door and asked, "Do you flood?" Sometimes we got accurate information, sometimes we didn't. But we did find out that the modeling that was used by FEMA to develop this map is just based on standard formulas of how they look at elevation changes. And they, it auto-adopts it. They never surveyed anybody's houses, they never came and found out where people really flooded or not. The maps were developed, and then they went into effect. So if you were put in a flood zone by their automated program, you have to pay. It isn't fair. And that is part of why we started doing all this stuff, because it really wasn't accurately reflecting what was really happening on the ground. And the only way to get some of this done was to get more accurate information. And the only way to get some of this done was to get more accurate information, start correcting the problem, and then a new engineering survey can be done that accurately reflects where the floodway is and where the flood zone areas are so that not everybody is just sort of swept in to the wave of who has to pay.
Right. And we're going to, one of those tools could be possibly getting an elevation certificate on your home. Tom is going to discuss that in just a moment. But an elevation certificate basically measures the elevation of your home above the base flood elevation. So if your home sits high enough above the base flood elevation, you can provide an elevation certificate and a letter of map amendment document to FEMA. They will review the details. And in many cases, people have gotten their home out of a flood plain. And FEMA's not going to redraw the map just for your home. But they're going to give you a letter of map amendment and then, and they'll, you know, send it to whoever at the, in the insurance department so that you don't have to get, have flood insurance anymore. Now, if your, if your home can't be removed from the flood plain, sometimes your flood insurance can be reduced based on the findings of what's in that elevation certificate. Okay, so that's the neighborhood, right? Is that it? There's Midlothian Creek.
You actually got to go down a little bit to show the overall.
Yeah, could you shrink it a little, Sandy? A little bit more, yeah. So this neighborhood that we're talking about is the neighborhood that is, has Waverly Avenue to the east, the Toll Road to the north, and like Springfield or Pulaski to the west and 147th to the south. So nearly the entire neighborhood's in a flood zone. Half of it is in the special flood hazard area.
That's where I'm at.
Right. And this is a neighborhood that doesn't flood.
We've had them forty years.
Right. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to elevation certificates. And we can come back to this during questions and answers. And there's a map here that we can refer to as well. Okay, so an elevation certificate is a six-page document that is completed by a civil engineer or a survey company, okay? And you can get a copy of a blank elevation certificate if you go to the website. There is a link for that CRS manual. If you click, open the link to the CRS manual and you click on the Series 300 tab and then click on Bullet 310, they'll give you a copy of the elevation certificate and the instructions. It's a pretty detailed document. Surveyor will come out and do the survey. He'll do measurements on your property. He'll take photographs, send all the information in to your, you give that document to your insurance company. They turn it into FEMA and then, you know, you can, if, depending on what the elevation certificate documents for you, you possibly can get your flood, your home out of a flood zone or at least have your insurance premium lowered.
Do you know if there's a fee for that?
Well, you, you do have to pay for the elevation certificate. A resident that I spoke to recently, he had, had an elevation certificate done and I believe it, the cost was about $800. However...
You pay $650.
Okay. And... Michelle's home was not removed from the flood zone, but her insurance premium went down significantly. Her, she was looking at a potential insurance premium, what, of like $3,200, Michelle?
$4,000.
How much?
$4,000.
$4,000 and what?
$52.55.
And what is it now?
It is $693 with a discount.
Okay. And how did, how were you notified of the discount? Did your agent contact you?
No, the discount just happened because I have my renewed renewal notice and FEMA put it on the renewal notice.
Okay.
I brought that with too.
Okay.
It's on there. This, this shows the 15% discount.
Okay, well then, for some of you, those of you who are not aware of the 15% discount, maybe it's a timing issue because your, your policy hasn't renewed yet. But it still would be a really good idea for you to contact your insurance agent because that discount did go into effect on May 1 and they should have, I'm assuming that you should have gotten some sort of prorated discount as of that date. Okay, so we've got the CRS manual. Can you click on Series 300 on that tab up there, Sandy? And then that first bullet is 310, right there. Click on that and that'll pull up the elevation certificate document and the instructions. I mean, it's not a document that a resident could fill out. And I, I reviewed it and there's no way I could fill it out. It's definitely something that the surveyor and engineer has to fill out for you. Okay.
Excuse me?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to get your own surveyor?
Pardon me?
Do you have to get your own surveyor or can you go to the Village?
You would have to hire your own surveyor. The Village, we might have a list at the Village Hall of different survey companies that you can use that are in the area.
Not anyone that, that is like working for the people of Midlothian. You just pick someone out?
You just pick someone out. I know that Michelle and Mary both use the same company. It's a company out of Oak Forest. I think they're called, is it Granith?
It's RH Gran.
Yeah. So that's what the elevation certificate looks like. So this is a tool that the NFIP uses to confirm the elevation of your structure. Again, the surveyor comes out and they do measurements of your foundation and will calculate the measurement of your foundation to the base flood elevation that's in the area that you are located in. And it's used as a supporting document if you are going to go ahead and apply for a letter of map amendment. And as I mentioned earlier, sometimes an elevation certificate, you know, the information provided will enable a home to get out of the special flood hazard area and sometimes not. But you may be entitled to getting a reduction in your premium if you do provide an elevation certificate. Tom, do you have anything else you'd like to add with regards to elevation certificates?
Yeah, let's be brief. The elevation cer-, cert-, certificate, the surveyor has to be licensed in the state and you would go out there and determine where the lowest opening of your building is to allow stormwater to go, to go through. If the lowest opening's above the base flood elevation, there's an excellent chance of being taken out of the base flood.
And there's a, there's a misconception that people think if you have a basement that you can't get out of the bas-, you can't get out of the flood plain, but that's not true. Mary has a basement. She was able to get her house out of the flood plain. So it all depends on how your home was built and how high the foundation is over the base flood elevation. Okay, last one. Okay, this about flood insurance. I do apologize. We had planned to have an insurance agent here, but that plan fell through at the last minute. So as I was preparing for this presentation, I was trying to read up as much as I could about FEMA flood insurance. And there's just so much information out there that I would not possibly able, be able to present all of it to you during this session because I wanted to cover all the other information. The Village is going to continue to have these town hall meetings and in the next six months, we will schedule another town hall meeting specifically with regards to the topic of FEMA flood insurance versus your homeowner's insurance. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of information here. Homeowner's insurance does not cover flooding. You can buy a rider on your homeowner's insurance to cover, you know, if the electricity goes out and your sump pump goes out and you flood. But homeowner's insurance typically does not cover flooding. All the floods that we've had, especially that flood in April of 2013 with everybody got flooded, whether you were on a slab or had a crawl space or a basement, homeowner's insurance doesn't cover any of that damage. However, what I also learned was that there are some FEMA policies that do cover contents. That's one myth. People don't think that it covers contents. But there are some policies that do cover contents. And there are FEMA insurance policies, oh, excuse me, FEMA insurance policies that are available for apartments and condos. But the biggest takeaway that I had in reading, doing all the, doing all the reading was myth number three. I don't need flood insur-, I don't need flood insurance because FEMA gives disaster assistance. Well, first of all, you only get disaster assistance if the president declares a disaster. And then the grant that you get is only about $5,000 to $7,000 per household. If you had FEMA, if you had a FEMA flood insurance policy, your FEMA flood insurance claim payout would be way over $7,000. So it's really important that we all understand how FEMA flood insurance affects not only our homes, but affects our whole community. If you have any specific questions with regards to your flood policy, you can contact NFIP. On the last slide, we've got the telephone number for NFIP. And they also provide a website called floodsmart.gov. So that concludes my comments for this evening. I want to thank all of you for coming and thank you for your attention. And we do have time for questions and answers. Last slide, Sandy. And this program, this, these slides will be saved and it'll be on the Village website. On this website, there's my contact information. Contact information for Superintendent Weinert. The call center for NFIP is on the bottom. And there's the website for floodsmart.gov. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
Has the flood plane and floodway changed over time? Because we've been about 20, 22 years in our home. In our home. And I believe when we bought this current home, we did not need to buy flood insurance.
Right.
So has it changed over time? I know...
Yes.
Maybe that we are in a flood plain. I know everybody on my block, it's flooded.
Really? But if, well, if that's the case, if you don't flood, then doing an elevation certificate for your property may be of a big benefit for you. But yes, the question was, has the flood, has the flood map changed over time? And the answer is yes. NFIP started mapping flood zones in the seventies, like 1976. And the date of our last firm, which stands for flood insurance rate map, is 2008. And that's what this document here is on the table.
How often do they do that?
Pardon?
How often do they do that?
That I, I don't know. Every 10 years? Every 10 years. And Mary's right. When they, when they do these maps, it's based on topographical calculations, I think through GIS mapping. They don't, they don't send a crew of surveys out here to shoot surveys all over the neighborhood. If they did, it would be more accurate. And a lot of people won't, wouldn't be, our flood plain would be a lot smaller. But that's why, unfortunately, the burden and the onus and the financial responsibility is kind of put back onto the property owner. But at least we have that tool of the elevation certificate that you guys can take advantage of. Now, again, it is costly. It's between $600 and $800. But if you're, to your point, sir, if, if you did an elevation certificate and you sent it into FEMA and they took a look at it and your home was above the base flood elevation, you very well could get your home out of the flood plain or at least have your insurance premium reduced.
Is there going to be a savings from what you're paying right now?
Right.
So the way I...
My major concern is if the flood plane and floodways have changed over time, maybe I should look into purchasing flood insurance. Not by necessarily wanting extra costs.
And you, oh, that's one thing that I did not mention, that I meant to mention. FEMA, FEMA does offer preferred risk policy for those who are not in a flood plain but live in an area that has the potential for flooding. And we have, we have many homes in that situation as well. People are not in a flood plain, but they flood terribly because of Natalie Creek. So you are not required to be in a flood plain in order to purchase flood insurance. That policy is called a preferred risk policy. And because it's for lower-risk properties, the premiums are much lower and those policies are not subject to the 15% CRS discount. But the premiums on those policies are very low. In fact, there's a handout on the back table with regards to preferred risk policies. And on the back page is a chart that shows you what the, what the premium cost would be like per $100,000 of value of your property.
Cathy, do you know that they cover contents with those policies?
On the preferred risk, you can get contents. Now, what Nick had told me when he was at the CRS class was, some of the FEMA policies, the only contents they will cover in your basement is mechanical items like your, I don't know if your washer and dryer would be included, but it would cover your hot water heater, your furnace, the salt, water softener.
Washer and dryer too.
Yeah.
So it basically is mechanicals or things that are attached to your house, but nothing that you're storing in the space that floods.
Correct. That would have to be covered by a rider on your homeowner's insurance policy.
And homeowner's insurance policies will only cover backup of sewer and drain. They will not cover flooding, whatever that is. If it comes in through the window, your homeowner's insurance won't cover it.
Right.
Flood, that's flood insurance. If it comes in through a crack in a wall, flood insurance won't cover it. Then neither will your insurance. If your whole house is knocked off, if it's cut and slapped...
Right. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I got a question. What were the improvements going to be?
Pardon me?
You, you hit on it a little bit about the improvements, what the Village is going to do or what...
Well, right now, we're waiting. MWRD, a couple of years ago, MWRD announced that they were going to do a flood mitigation project on Natalie Creek. And Helen, how many houses is that going to affect?
240.
240 homes, just in Midlothian. The whole project is not taking place just in Midlothian. It's taking place in Oak Forest in Midlothian. The creek starts in the, in the golf course. And it runs through Oak Forest, behind Food for Less, behind the Park District building. It comes out at about 100, at the traffic light by 151st and Cicero. Comes under Cicero, behind Kilpatrick, goes on 149th, hangs a rite and then winds its way through the rest of town. So the plan is going to be to dig a retention pond that's going to be in the neighborhood behind the Park District. Basically, the Natalie Creek retention pond and the Park District retention pond are going to be fairly close to each other, I think. I haven't seen a, a specific drawing yet, but they're going to be in the same general vicinity of each other. So they're going to start there and I believe that's, that might be the first place they're going to start. Then they're going to put in a box culvert at the corner of 149th and Kilpatrick because that's a huge pinch point there. They're going to put an underground box culvert there. And then they're going to repair the banks of the creek along the whole entire creek. And I don't know exactly what repair they're going to do in Oak Forest, but that's what's going to happen in Midlothian.
So the creek along the track is going to be improved too?
No, this is just Natalie Creek, not Midlothian Creek.
There are two creeks that are running in Midlothian. One is Midlothian Creek and one is Natalie Creek. They are both part of the Little Calumet watershed, but they're completely different. They originate in different places and they run different places. And that's sort of always been a misnomer about which, which creek is causing the flooding. And, and so some, some portions do flood from Midlothian Creek and some flood from Natalie Creek. But the MWRD project that Cathy's talking about is relief for Natalie Creek.
That's true. And MWRD right now is working with the Village of Crestwood, the township, and they recently contacted Midlothian and asked Midlothian for their support. They're working on a potential repair project or fixed project for Tributary C. Tributary C is a little tiny, it's, it's not like Midlothian Creek or Natalie Creek. It's a creek. It's, it's a little tiny creek that causes massive, massive amounts of damage that's over on the west side of town. It runs through the unincorporated area, just behind, like, I think of...
By the golf course?
By the golf course. It runs behind Maple, behind Maple Avenue or Maple Lane or Maple Court. What is it called?
Maple Lane.
Maple Lane. Runs behind Maple Lane, runs through the golf course, ends up in Crestwood. So they're working on some engineering for Tributary C right now as well. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just asking, does Natalie Creek kind of come from this like belly button hill? Like, we're right at 149th and Kilpatrick, it's like Natalie Creek, belly button. We could flood it up and join the rivers.
Right. I believe that some of that belly button, does some of that belly button flooding...
Some of the...
Some of it's from Midlothian Creek and some of it's from Natalie Creek. So hopefully, when Natalie Creek gets fixed, some of that issue will be resolved. But I did, I did mention that stormwater capital plan and Belly Button, the Belly Button Hill neighborhood is included in that stormwater capital management plan. They're going to, they're looking at some potential projects for that neighborhood to fix some of the flooding over there. So like I said, once that capital plan is done and we have an idea of some shovel-ready projects... So like I said, once that capital plan is done and we have an idea of some shovel-ready projects, when engineering, um, grants become available, we can go after some grant money to have those projects engineered and then go after other grant money to have the projects constructed and completed. Yes, Jamie?
I have two questions. Have you ever heard of an elevation survey be raised? Like, you, you had an elevation survey, it's a thousand dollars, whatever, but then when you go and get another elevation survey, it goes up higher?
The, the dollar amount of the elevation survey?
I'm just asking.
No, I've not, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
Is he familiar, he seems to know about elevation, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
No, I. This is, this is Tom Magel, he's our village engineer with Robinson Engineering.
It's all based on the elevation of the building. And whatever that is, it, it is. So whatever the opening is in the building is what the elevation is.
Okay, 'cause mine right now, I don't have FEMA, uh, the, the insurance due to, it wasn't included on my loan when we bought the house.
Mm-hmm.
I'm getting my insurance through my mortgage company, but if something happens through FEMA, I'm not getting anything. My mortgage is paid, that's it, it goes to my mortgage company.
Do you have FEMA flood insurance policy on your home?
I qualify for it, but I need an elevation survey and I keep getting told, wait until the creek gets done because it'll be better. So I'm like, should I get it now or should I do it when the creek is done?
Well, if you have a mortgage through a bank that's federally insured, that, that mortgage company is required to require you to have FEMA flood insurance.
It was for the same exact stuff and it was cheaper through my mortgage company than through FEMA. I am in the flood zone, I'm right across there, Natalie Creek is my, Natalie Creek is my.
Well, you're, you're. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how the rating for your policy worked because you're, the cost for your flood insurance should have been essentially the same whether you got it from State Farm or Allstate or your mortgage company secured it for you through whatever insurance vendor they use. So I'm not sure how that works.
I was just wondering, 'cause I don't wanna get the elevation survey and it's like, oh, you hold four thousand now instead of a thousand.
Well, you're, the cost of your elevation certificate shouldn't change.
No, I'm talking about the amount per month or probably per year.
You're talking about your FEMA flood insurance?
Right.
Okay.
I, I paid when I first bought the house, it was a thousand dollars for the year, that's it.
Okay.
May I add one thing?
Yes.
If you get an elevation cer-cert certificate, it doesn't bound you to give it to your mortgage company.
It's, yeah, it's your private document, you don't have to share it.
Okay, but.
And if it's beneficial for you, I'd say sure, if it's, if it's fun, I'll have, do whatever you think you should to do with it.
Okay.
Lenny, you had a question?
The only private difference, if your purchase was before the last map. So in my case, I bought my home in nineteen ninety-nine, the flood zone map changed in two thousand. It wasn't until two thousand and seven when I refinanced my house that I was done mandated, mandated to pay flood insurance. So a lot of times what we'll find in the real estate world is that people don't have flood insurance because they, they're either paid off or they're more than previous to these flood zone maps.
Okay.
Now a new owner's moving in and that portion of the home or the entire home is in the flood zone and that's what, that's what it comes up. There is a myth that flood insurance does take your values down. Because what it does, the value of the home is the value of the home, it's based on square footage, the improvements that you have. The hard part about it is flood insurance does make it a little bit harder to sell because it obviously costs the buyer more money per month for the same treatment. But that may be where your situation is, is that you, when did you purchase your home?
I purchased my home in January two thousand and thirteen and elevation survey was assigned and then two thousand and fourteen I was sold again. Because of an asset happening in July of two thousand and twelve, I had to get, um, an additional elevation survey, which was with the, uh, with that debt. I bought the house.
Your lenders, your lenders checking different things. Challenge all of it, challenge everything that comes out. I just, I just shared with a few people, I just got my flood insurance reduced from nine thousand six hundred dollars to nearly nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Wow. And is that because you got an elevation certificate?
No, for five years I've been fighting FEMA, fighting American Family, fighting Wells Fargo, I had to go to Lloyds of London.
So.
I had to go out of country.
Okay.
And I got accepted as of today.
As a what?
I got accepted as of today, that's right.
So your, your FEMA, your flood insurance is through Lloyds of London?
Through Flood Simple, it's underwritten by Lloyds of London.
Okay, everyone, remember that, Flood Simple, underwritten by Lloyds of London. Pardon me?
He'll get, he'll get you the.
Okay, please, please do, share the information, we'll put it on the village website.
The other thing that.
And Facebook.
That Len said was that the value of your home is the value of your home. I sort of did this proactively for my mother's house, knowing that at some point I was gonna have to sell her property and she is like the highest house for blocks around. So I went and had her elevation certificate done, I got her MOLM, took her off the flood zone map and I did use it as a tool to sell her house.
Mm-hmm.
Because I could list that house, Len was my agent, we listed the house and said, you don't, this is not, is a property that does not require flood insurance and this is a savings of this much, which made that property go really fast. It was an easy thing to sell my house.
So you might take something.
So it's worth it, I, in my opinion, it's worth it to get the certificate. You might get a discount, you might get rid of your flood insurance and if nothing else, it's somewhere down the line. It might make it easier to get rid of your house.
Right, yes.
I got a question for, uh, the engineer.
For Tom?
Yeah.
Tom.
What is, when you say they look at the lowest, uh, perforation into your house, would that include your drain tile into your sump pump?
No, sir, it's window wells, it's garage doors, front doors, back doors, someplace where overland flow could flow into it.
Okay, so not the sump pump there?
No, sir, it's not.
Now, there is, there are some, there are some flood protections that you can install for yourself that may help you in this regard. So if you have a walkout basement, okay, and say you have a concrete patio, I have a walkout basement, my concrete patio is flush with the very top step and you go down. Now, if I wanted to protect that stairwell, if I decided to have my con, my patio repoured, I could repour my patio and put in an elevated step and that would prohibit the water, the rainwater from running down into my, uh, walkout basement floor drain because that drain goes right to my sump pump and then, you know, the sump pump shoots it out into the front yard, okay? Another thing is if you have, if you have a, um, a split level or a basement, you know, with outside windows, you can install window wells that are higher than the, um, the level of your, of your lot. And that would also prevent rainwater and stormwater from draining into your windows. That would also be of a benefit for, potential benefit for you if you were gonna look into getting an elevation certificate. Because again, when the surveyor comes out to do, to get, gather the information for the elevation certificate, they do take photographs and they submit photographs to, along with the document. Yes?
Would you mind if I came up and looked at that map now?
No, please do, you're all welcome to come up and take a look at this map. Yes?
Is that why the building, the house is higher than the old map?
Potentially, depending, depending on where the home is located, yes. It's better to have the, to have the foundation come up above the base flood elevation. And I don't know what that measurement is, to be honest with you, uh, the contractor and the architect and an engineer would have to do that?
Um, here's my thought, I've watched as they build the house, pour your soil and try and all the, I didn't bring it up.
When was that house built? So this is a while back?
Yes, that my house, I got hired, I was saving, I got hired, I was already planning about that building. And then when this house came in, fifteen, fifteen years ago, you know, they were truckload, they were truckload dirty and.
I misunderstood, I thought you were talking about building right now. When people build houses, well, they, they shouldn't. No one should be, no one is allowed to build up their lot, which is gonna cause runoff and cause the runoff to go to the neighbors, yeah. Right. Right, but those houses were built, how long ago? They were just built?
Probably.